Today is Thursday, January 26th. It's 2:31 and today is a city council workshop meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Proton Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Kent Tellme.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present. And Mayor, real quickly, if I could just ask everybody that is in attendance, that is a volunteer on a board, committee, or commission, if you could please, if you have not already done so, sign in on the sign-in sheet so that I have record of your attendance.
Yeah, we want to make sure everybody gets credit for the workshop. So, city attorney, do you want to discuss our item here? Describe what we're going to be doing today.
Yeah, thank you. This is just, I'm doing the section about open meeting law, public records law, and conflict.
Joe.
Oops. Thank you. I'm trying to pull this up. I know probably 95 or more percent of you have done this training, and so I added a couple of different things to maybe keep you on your toes, and I know some of you brought food to keep you interested or awake. But we also took out a little bit of the repetition. So feel free to stop me on any questions, but like I said, I know you, I understand most of you have heard it before, but I think it's always good reminder and it's required. So, the, starting first with open meetings law, then we'll get into public record and conflict of interest law. The intent of the law, both public records and open meetings law, is that there be openness in government, that what the public servants do, elected public servants do, they do it in front of the public that elects them. And so, as we make any decisions related to open meetings law or to public records law, we keep that in mind and try to maximize the access and participation of the public and resolve any uncertainty in favor of openness. Now, here is the kind of two core concepts from the statute itself, and this Arizona revised statutes, Section 38, 431, and the following statutes is kind of the entirety of the open meetings law, along with cases that have come afterwards. But primarily, the rule is all meetings of any public body shall be public meetings, and all persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to the deliberations and proceedings. It is the public policy of the state that meetings of public bodies be conducted openly and that notices and agendas be provided for such meetings which contain such information as is reasonable and necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided. And so when it comes down to it, that is open meetings law, that public bodies meet in the public, and it requires only two things essentially, that the public be welcomed in or allowed in, and that notices be sufficient. So the first question is what is a meeting? A meeting is a gathering in person or through technological devices of a quorum of a public body to discuss, propose, deliberate, or to take legal action. So, a quorum of a public body, meaning a majority, and it's a majority of the number of members on the board. So if it's a nine-member board, for example, and only seven seats are filled, the quorum still is five, right? So it's the, it's a majority of the number of members of the board by statute or by its creating ordinance. And so if you don't have a quorum, and it's at a scheduled notice public meeting, you want to make sure you terminate that meeting immediately. You don't have a quorum, you cannot take official business. So it's kind of the corollary to the open meetings law. The primary thing is if you have a quorum, you have to have noticed it, and it's a public meeting. Now, if you don't have a quorum at what would otherwise be a public meeting, end the meeting and move forward and reschedule it. Now, notices and agenda are done mostly by staff, but as some background, the notice must inform the public when and where the public body will meet. Agendas must contain adequate information to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided, and that's the statutory language right below it, such information as is reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided. This is why sometimes when we go beyond the agenda item, it's so difficult to kind of know when that stops. I mean, it's all reasonableness-based. So the, as we create language for the agenda item, it's reasonably articulated to let the public know what we're doing, and so then the question is whether the discussions are reasonably related to that item. And it's easy to see if, say, for example, council was deciding on a new bike lane on Monazuma, and it's a new program, and the discussion merges into the benefits or drawbacks of a bike lane program. And I think you can see there, it's probably reasonably related, whether a bike lane program's a good thing or not. But we recently had a discussion on, I guess it's radio readers, meter readers, and it's a program already in the city, and if that then became a discussion of whether these readers were a good idea or a bad idea in general over the city, and whether we should change policy, you see that even though it's similar to the bike lane example, the public probably wouldn't reasonably understand that there was going to be discussion on the value of these readers, other than as it related to that particular example. So, there's a, there's a question on, as I said, it's always difficult to, when we, someone steps in to stop the conversation if it goes beyond the reasonable necessity, but it's important to keep that in mind as you go through your discussions, and remember that the public may come up, and they may go beyond what is relevant, but they're not governed by open meeting law. It's the responses of the public bodies, the commissions, that is relevant and that is governed by open meeting law, and so keep that in mind. So for that, for that reasons, topics such as old business or new business are inappropriate. They don't reasonably articulate to the public what's being discussed. And Prescott combines notices and agenda in one, and that's what most government entities do. The notice and agenda is the same thing. Now, the law requires 24 hours of public notice. It requires it to be posted on the website and in certain physical locations that we have on our website, or that we have noticed of on the website. But 24 hours is the requirement. Now, you may have public hearings, and those are defined by statute, and they have different deadlines, sometimes two weeks, and different notice requirements, maybe multiple times to be noticed in certain newspapers, but those are all relevant, but not to open meeting law. Open meeting law is 24 hours' notice. There are some exceptions to the notice requirements. One, and this is the second one on there, is actual emergencies. Where there's a real emergency that the public body needs to meet to do something quickly, that's an exception. The other is where a meeting is started, and for whatever reason cannot finish, either in that location or because of timing, and so it's put off to a different date, or oftentimes put off till later in the evening, for example, and in that case, you don't need the 24-hour notice, if the first meeting was properly noticed, and if there's announcements, reasonable announcements, at the location of the new time. Now, I would ask Sarah how many times this has been applied here? I'd guess close to none. I've only seen, I've only ever done it once, so.
Yeah, not, none in the last five years.
So who must comply? This is another area where the basic rule is easy to understand, but it gets a little bit more complicated as it relates to bodies that are smaller than the actual public body. But getting into what the public body is, it's any entity however designated officially established on motion or order of a public body or presiding officer of a public body. So, what this is getting at is any, any government entity created by statute, created by local ordinance, created by motion by this board, they are all subcommittees, and therefore all public bodies. Now, mayor may have ad hoc committees and so forth, those also are public bodies. So anything created by official act, by a statutory public body, down to local ordinance, and anything created by any of those bodies. And as I mentioned, this, the smaller groups is where things get a little bit more tricky. Clearly, subcommittees, and you see there, that are created on official motion, or created officially by a public body, those smaller groups are also public bodies. But we get into a little bit more tricky situation when they're not officially created groups. And this is where, I know we've talked about this in some of the groups before, but I'll just use seven, I'll use council as example, but there may be three members of council who want to push forward a certain agenda, and call them Gurley Street Gang, they want to do things on Gurley Street. Now, even though that three-person group is in a quorum, and even though it's not officially created by council, it could present problems with the open meeting law, because, as we'll get into a little bit, it can have the appearance of avoiding the open meeting law. So, we'll get into this a little bit more on the next slide, and I, and again, the law is not necessarily clear on this. We have guidance from Attorney General that smaller groups can be problematic, but there's not case law establishing exactly where to draw that line. But the only reason I bring it up, and I think it's important to understand, is understanding that even nonofficial groups, if it becomes sort of, some sort of standing committee, even if you create it yourself, it can raise problems under the open meeting law, especially to the extent it appears to have, or has the appearance of avoiding the open meeting So, as it relates to these smaller groups, just remember the purpose of the open meeting law, which is business of government entities and of public bodies happens in public. And I put here a new case, this was actually decided a month ago, and I think it's, it's not necessarily directly relevant to these bodies here, but it's, helps illustrate a few of the factors. It's Puente versus Arizona State Legislature. Now, in this case, a group of Republican legislators in the State House, they established a rule where, or a calendar, which 26 of them would be at this ALEC summit. It's a three-day summit where they would discuss creating model ordinances, for example, model laws. And so, it started to become a problem because some independent groups sued the Arizona State Legislature, saying that they were violating the open meeting law, because during these groups, and they would be discussing model ordinances and so forth, there would then become a quorum of subcommittees, not necessarily a quorum of the full body, but a quorum of various subcommittees, and that would violate the open meeting law. And I'll tell you what happened and how it was decided, but the important thing here is, it was kind of a recognition by the court that yes, even though these are not official meetings, and not, the fact that there was a gathering would possibly create problems with open meeting law. Now, in this case, there's a constitutional provision under Arizona State Constitution that allows the legislative houses to determine their own rules of procedure, and the court decided that because there is this constitutional requirement, and because open meeting law is not in the state constitution, but is a state law under statute, that it becomes a political question, and the court will not override political questions. Now, that's relevant to the legislature, it's not relevant to you all. We don't have that constitutional provision that allows us to make our own rules. The reason I bring it up is to kind of understand that conversation, that smaller groups, even when they're meeting and not in some sort of a formal capacity, can bring up the open meeting law. And the court didn't rule in their favor because of open meeting law issues, but the political question doctrine. Now, another exception to the open meeting law is executive sessions, which require prior consent of city, the city attorney. There's seven legal reasons to enter into executive session, and you see there, the most common, personnel matters, discussion of confidential information, legal advice, and discussion of settlement, contract, or property negotiations. And I'll tell you, the other remaining ones that aren't up there all relate to discussion of contracts in some way, negotiations with an Indian tribes one, negotiations with a labor union. So they're all related essentially to either legal advice or contracts or the personnel Who may attend executive sessions? Members of the public body, persons subject to personnel discussions, auditor general, individuals whose presence is reasonably necessary. So this is where staff is needed to be able to clarify an issue or to receive directions there, allowed into the meeting. Any member of the public body of that body is always allowed in, right? And so there has to be proper notice to the members. And then, persons subject to personnel discussion, I know council will deal with this, probably other commissions won't, but if a personnel discussion is taking place, that person to be discussed needs a special notice beforehand, and then has the right to be in the meeting, and actually possesses the right to remove it from executive session and hold it in an open meeting if that person desires. So some of the pitfalls of executive session, what happens in executive session stays in executive, in executive session. Now, I've talked about executive session a bit, and most of the commissions won't deal with it. The council deals with a lot because council deals with a lot of contracts. And it's my opinion that executive sessions actually involve council members more than a government that doesn't have executive sessions, because otherwise, if you're not holding executive sessions, it means staff has an inordinate amount of power, or one or two council members have an inordinate amount of power. So in my opinion, executive sessions are a sign of good governance, because those contract negotiations can be done by a council as a whole, instead of by one or two council members and staff members. Having said that, the privacy requirements and the confidentiality is very important, and as I've mentioned as well, when there are leaks of this confidential information, it can hurt the city, it can hurt the entity by revealing maybe their position in negotiations and so forth. But the bigger issue is, these things are private for a reason, it's to go through the negotiations, and when there's leaks, the people that are getting the information then get an inordinate amount of power and information just because of their relationship with someone in a group or a commission. To me, that's a due process problem. It gives those people more, like I said, more insight than the regular public, and I feel that's, it's wildly inappropriate. So it's important to keep in mind the confidentiality requirement. Now, a couple of other requirements, there's a statement that me or whoever is representing the city attorney's office will read in those meetings, and again, reinforcing the importance of confidentiality. No legal action can take an executive session. So there can be direction to staff in some ways, but there cannot be an official legal action taken by the council or any member or board. That needs to be done after recess from the executive session. I just have a portion from the Attorney General handbook, again, repeating what we've already talked about, that this information should not be disclosed. It obviously violates the open meeting law, but it presents possible criminal charges as well. So how to avoid pitfalls of open meeting law? Don't poll other members on commission business. Limit your discussions with other members to public meetings. Don't send emails to each other. Distribute information to council through your staff liaison, and disband meetings when a quorum is not in attendance. Again, as it relates to this sort of smaller groups and so forth, that's where we talk about splintering the quorum, that's really the concept that brings up. Now, is there anything wrong with two commission members mailing each other information, or even working on a action together? No, there's nothing wrong with that. But, once it starts becoming action, and before other members of council or a commission are brought into it, it should be, it should happen in the public. And the problem you often get is, as we call daisy chaining, where one person will talk to another member, then they'll talk to another member, and it keeps going around till everybody has now heard the conversation. There was no individual violation of open meeting law, but by talking it out through multiple members, it brings up at least a quorum of the group or a majority of the group. The hub and spokes of a will analogy is also a good one, where, and I think there's a slide on this in a second, but there's nothing wrong with staff members sending emails to the, to council as a whole. That's not communication amongst the public body. Also, there's nothing wrong with council members emailing a member of staff. The problem becomes with the hubs of a spoke analogy is, say, for example, I'm talking to each individual council member, and getting their take on what they want here, what they want there, and it becomes me holding all of the information and distributing it, and it's the same as some sort of serial communication or a meeting. It becomes a meeting, right, a gathering through technological means or through a third party. And while most of this circumvention has to do with what members of the commission or council do, the hub and spokes analogy can involve any third party. It could be one council member, it could be a staff member, or a member of the public that serves as kind of intermediary. So, two-way communications that are prohibited, discussions, deliberating, taking legal action back and forth among a quorum on a matter that could forcibly come before the board. But also some one-way communication is prohibited as well, which is proposing legal action. And I think I have the next slide deals with this. For example, if, if one member of council sent an email to all the other members saying, hey, just so you know, council person so-and-so was admitted to the hospital, it's just not legal action. It doesn't propose government business. That wouldn't violate the open meeting law. Now, best practices is try to avoid that because of what could come next, but that's not some sort of open meeting law violation. But a proposal to say, for example, let's install a crosswalk here, is, would, just by sending the email out to everybody on council would present a violation of the open meeting law. Again, staff email, as I said before, the staff may send emails to board members or council members, and receipt by members of council or commissions is not a violation of the open meeting law. The only time it becomes a problem is when there, and that's why we will often put, or should put, as staff members, do not reply all, and so forth. And by the way, it happens. There's times when there's a reply all, one-time thing is not going to create a problem, but it's something to be, keep aware of, and not have a technical violation of the open meeting law. So, blogs and social media, Facebook or otherwise, also present another potential problem with the open meeting law. Now, there's no problem having a Facebook, having other sorts of social media and posting information on there, including posting perhaps your opinion as to possible legal action. That's one person. The problem rises when there becomes a conversation within social media, even when it is public-facing. So if there's a post, and then there's comments back and forth in the comments, even though the public can see it, that's a problem under the open meeting law. So feel free to use social media as you see fit, but a quorum of members shouldn't be responding. And like I said, where there, you can express your opinions, if you call for action from other members of council, that becomes a problem. So if I am on the council and I say, I think we should have this stoplight here, that's probably all right, it's me exercising my First Amendment speech, but if I say, hey, council members, we need to put something here, even though it's in public, that's a violation of the open meeting law. I know it's a small kind of distinction, but it's important to keep that in mind. Yeah?
Thank you. As I understand, all of our emails, we have to consider all of our emails to be public record, because they can be requested by the public?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, I'll skip forward so I can answer that. I know I kind of addressed it later on, but I think it's important to note, the, whether something is public record or not, doesn't necessarily relate to, for example, the email address. It has to do with the content of your email. So what that means is, in your private phones, text messages you might send to each other or to staff, your private email addresses, that can all be subject to an open or a public records request. It has to do with the content. Now, we have established a policy and procedure on that, that if it's, say, for example, a city email address, and there's emails on that city email address, then IT might go through it to help respond to a public records request. If it's on your personal email, it might still be subject to personal record, or public records request, but you, the individual owner of that email address, is the proper person to go through those emails and respond. So you have some, so if, for example, someone made a records request asking for council member Rusing's emails regarding this topic, and maybe she has some in her personal emails, IT wouldn't come onto your personal emails to look at it, but we would direct you to look through your emails and see what you have.
Okay, thank you.
Just some notes, not necessarily illegal actions or not, but best practices would be to avoid the following, passing notes to each other, even if it's about ordering lunch or so forth. You have an appearance with, there's communication that the public can't hear, whispering to fellow board members, and, don't take this too far, I'm not taking it too far, but remember where there's communications between individuals at a meeting that's on a public body, and the public sees that, they can start wondering what is the discussions. And discussions are to happen in public. And then quorum, talking to individuals before the meeting officially starts or after the meeting officially starts. Social events are another issue. Where there's a quorum that may be present, there should be a courtesy agenda to be posted. Now, we post that there's, might be a quorum of, for example, city council at any other subcommittee or commission, and so that meets it, for example, if there's a P&amp;Z meeting, we now post that any council, there might be a quorum of people there. But we also need to be able to do that for other social events. So I, I don't know, there may be a funeral of someone that was a friend of, and if there is, please let Sarah know that maybe a quorum of you might be there, and she can just post a courtesy notice that, hey, there's a funeral, a majority of, or quorum of council may be there. It doesn't give the public a right to be there, but it's, it's best practice is to post that courtesy agenda.
Joe, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, with regards to that, I have two questions, I guess. The first question is, like, water issue subcommittee meeting is a meeting that's comprised of myself, Steve Sishka, and Kathy Rusing. If one of the members of council wanted to attend that meeting, would they be able to with a courtesy notice, essentially?
With a courtesy notice of quorum, then it's possible. Now, so yeah, that's the answer.
Okay. So, and then this leads to my next question, which is, what are best practices around, you know, I guess I think about P&amp;Z meetings that I've been to, where there's been a quorum. And initially, there was this kind of misunderstanding, I think, that we couldn't have a quorum, and then I think we made it kind of set up so that there was an ability for someone to watch a video in the conference room and kind of get around that. But is there a best practice in terms of, even for committees or commissions, about how to have a good appearance when you have a quorum at an event, even if it's something as simple as, you know, a funeral or a social event?
So, my recommendation on best practices is, as it relates to, first of all, other meetings, we have those posted that a quorum may be present. So the fact that there is a quorum is not necessarily problematic. But if we go back to some of those other issues we talked about, like whispering during a meeting, that applies as well if you're just in attendance. So my recommendation is, if there's a quorum at another sort of meeting, stay, don't sit by each other, don't kind of talk during the meeting. And I know it sounds kind of silly, but I think that's the best practice. Yeah.
Well, last week, all of us were in attendance at the Chamber of Commerce annual meeting, and we all sat together. All seven of us were in the front row.
Right.
And, and...
And they were assigned seats. We couldn't sit anywhere else.
Yeah, I mean, the chamber put our names on chairs.
And we're talking about best practices, and best practices change depending on the situation. So I'm not trying to say, you guys just screwed up. But it, I think as we're dealing with, especially something like that, it's just natural that you're going to probably be placed in the same place, that you're seen as one body by the public. But then it becomes a little bit of conduct, like the whispering. It's, if you're speaking about issues, city issues, with each other, people will hear that and see that as being a problem. So just be careful to make sure, to remember kind of the spirit of the law, which is that public business happens in public. I think...
Connie, go ahead.
If Brandon wants to have a party, and he wants to invite us all over, can we go to the party, or do we have to post that?
We have to post that.
Okay.
Because that's, and that isn't something that happens by accident. Brandon will know who's on the guest list, and so, and it's not a big deal, just let Sarah know. I know that you're not planning on...
No, none of you are invited.
You let Sarah know.
Don't whisper the invite to me.
No.
So it doesn't allow public to come, but we don't have to have his address, for example, but it would say, members of council will be at a party, no business of the public body will be discussed, and no action taken. We're okay.
So, Joe, going back to, I guess, the thing I think about is, you know, where this, I think Eric's right, like, the idea of, at a public event, like, obviously, the... I think Eric's right, like, the idea of, at a public event, like, obviously, the public views us, or the Chamber of Commerce in this case viewed us as one entity, and they sat us all together. But I guess I'm, I'm thinking more specifically, when we come here for a P&amp;Z meeting, it's probably a good idea that not all four of us be, you know, sitting in a line, you know, being...
Right. And that's what I was thinking of when you said it, so that's why I gave the answer I did. And I don't know, planning and zoning maybe could talk about council being at meetings, but there's probably a bigger group, and the more, kind of seems enforced, it probably seems a little bit like a directive.
Right. And I guess, I guess, the other question I have, just real quickly, is, I, and this is a clarification for me, at, at a meeting like that, so, for instance, I'm the liaison to planning and zoning, right?
Yeah.
And I don't really view my role as liaison to get up and address that body, because that seems like it's going a bit too far into that direction of making it feel like I'm putting pressure on the planning and zoning to do something perhaps, right? I mean, I guess, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I think I can. So, if there are subcommittees or commissions that are beholden essentially, or recommending bodies to council, I think the best product comes when you don't give information or input. Now, from my perspective as city attorney, I won't counsel you that you can't make conversation, just that if you do, you have to make sure to notice that it's your personal opinion, not the position of council. But again, if we're getting to best practice, best practice would be not to direct comments.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Did we hammer that one enough? Now, again, another potential issue is public forums, speeches, and community events. As elected members of a public body, and even those on non-elected but appointed bodies, there will be times when you might give speeches. That also is fine. You're allowed to do that, but if a quorum might be present, again, when one or more council members plan on speaking or discussing city business with those in attendance, a special meeting agenda should be noticed, or must be posted. And in that case, where there's an actual speech, the agenda must include a description of the general topics to be discussed, and then no action will be taken. So, and I'll, if anybody wants this, I think you all have the Attorney General handbooks at this point, my understanding, but if you would like to see the slideshow, just let me know, send me an email, and I can send you it. So as to the public's right, they have the right to attend, they have the right to listen, they can even tape recorder or videotape, but they don't have the right on its own to talk or to disrupt a meeting. And so, there's always debate about whether to have a call to the public, but if any commission or, or council wants to limit the right of the public to, to talk, that, you can do that. Now, there are exceptions to that as well. For example, some of the public hearings require public input and so forth. But as a general rule, the open meeting law doesn't require that public be allowed to speak. That becomes subject to the body itself and to the rules that the body may set. I've often dealt with videotaping as a, public meetings as kind of an issue, and it is allowed, it's lawful to videotape. Now, if we videotape and we have it available to people, we can somewhat limit what other people do to videotape, and they can't cause a disruption. So sometimes, you'll see, and I haven't seen it in Prescott, but I've seen it other places, where people will come up and start recording, you know, standing right in front of the microphone and so forth, that's a disruption, and that can be limited.
Joe?
Yeah.
What's the remedy for, just for...
Removal?
Good question.
So, the remedy is removal, and we'll often have some sort of law enforcement here, or at least available, and especially where we know something might become contentious, you and staff hopefully will give notice to the police department, to others, that we can have someone available to remove those who are potentially problematic. Yeah?
Simple question. I know there's a certain decorum that we'd like to have in our meetings, and the last two days where we've had Simpul come and present as speakers representing the Avapi Hills and discussing the SunDog Connector Road, there's been a lot of applause and clapping. Is that considered disrupting a meeting? I mean...
It could be. There's, there's no hard line that says a one-minute clap is fine and a two, you know, two-minute clap is wrong. It, it has to do with establishing the rules that you want to follow, and then making a reasonable determination about what's disruptive.
So it's really up to the mayor to say, you know, please...
It is, or whoever the chair is of that meeting, it's primarily up to them.
I try to just allow one hand clapping.
But, and you'll see, in, there's, for example, the recent meetings, I mean, there might have been a five or 10-second applause, and that's probably not disruptive.
Yeah.
There were some AVO applauses, about 45 seconds long. That might be disruptive, so...
Or boos.
Or boos. But I, I think you just want to keep, disrupting is the key, and what that means is different depending on the meeting, and also depending on the rules set up and the warnings given. Obviously, anytime you arrest somebody or remove them, it's going to be in the newspaper and elsewhere, so be judicious. Penalties. Violation of the open meeting law includes the following, including mandatory nullification of business transaction, transacted in violation of the open meeting law. This is most often seen where a notice is insufficient, or where there is a failure to, or business is taken with less than a quorum. If any of those types of things happen, or other violation, that the action taken is nullified, and it has to come back before whatever body, and be either ratified or reconsidered. Civil penalties, equitable relief, attorney's fees, removal from office. I think that most people sitting on these boards, commissions, and councils do so because they want to do good, not for nefarious reasons. Given that, a nullification of a business is probably the most we'll see, or sometimes a small fine. But if it becomes, if there is some sort of nefarious reason, though, you'll see the other types of more egregious penalties that you could be facing. So movement past open meeting law, I guess before I do, is there any questions on open meeting law? I know you've heard it a million times, you've, I just spoke way too long. Public records law. So, a public record is any record in the custody of government entity that has a substantial nexus to government activity, and they are presumed a public record if so. So what is the rule? The rule is that the public has a right to view public records, and has a right to receive a copy of those records for a fee. Arizona imposes a presumption in favor of disclosure, disclosure of public records. So there are exceptions, there are things that are confidential, and that isn't subject to a public records request. But again, just like open meeting law, when in doubt, the presumption is in favor of openness. Sorry. So, involved in these are records reasonably necessary to provide an accurate accounting of the official activities and any government-funded activities. One thing that we won't be discussing here, but kind of is an overarching theme, is we have record retention schedules, and while we're required to keep records, at some point those records are no longer relevant, or otherwise we get rid of them. So one important thing is to have a records retention schedule and to follow that schedule, meaning that staff or whoever else is holding the document, delete them when they should, or destroy them when they should. But until that point, that they keep it. So all records made or received by public officials or employees in the course of their public duties are the property of the city, and all public officers are responsible for preserving, maintaining, and caring for the public records within their offices. So, to get to council member Ruasing's point, it's not just your official documents, it could include personal emails and texts if it is in the conduct of city business. But as I mentioned, you are the custodian of those records and would be the one to review it. So, one of the exceptions to public records law is best interest of the state. It's fairly rare. I think one of the examples that's often given, because it helps illustrate this point, is a case for the dean of Arizona State University. And in that case, there was a bunch of prospects who submitted resumes, and a recruiter had went out and got a bunch of names. And there was a records request for the names of all these prospects for the, for the president of the university. And the university said no, and there was a lawsuit. And what the court says is, that big list of prospects is not public record. And it may be technically, but the interest of the state in having a good candidate pool is more important than the public's right to know who all the prospects are. But the court also said that once there's a narrowing of that list to final candidates, then the interest of the public knowing who the candidate is outweighs the government interest in being able to get the best candidates. So that's just an example of how that best interest of the state works. But generally, information that is protected from public records requests is possibly best interest of the state, which I, I don't think we do very often. I don't know, Sarah, how many times you've disapproved for something like that. I know I probably have only once in my career. So, but attorney-client privileged information is not subject to public records request. Confidential, personal identifying information, all of that is protected. But in the case where there's personal identifying information, that document may be disclosable, but we would redact the, the personal identifying information. Any questions on public records law?
Counsel?
Yeah.
Sorry, I do have a question. You mentioned personal emails, our personal email programs and what we may send.
Right.
The custodians, the individual is the custodian.
Yes.
And you also mentioned retention policies. What would be the retention policy that applies to the individual?
Well, until administrative use of that email is no longer, it has passed. So, is that a good answer? I don't know, that's the answer from the state.
Well, I know my own email program will self-delete after, I forget what...
I, I think, from my perspective, if it's something that's pending, that's relevant to pending government business, you should keep that while it's pending. After that, it may be deleted, and it can be, then it is permanently deleted according to your ISP or your, your web, web protocol.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, conflict of interest law. So, those are the statutes, Arizona Revised Statute 38501 through 511, and we'll get into each of those sub-particles. Who does it apply to? All public officers, which includes all board members, all commission members, anybody who's on any sort of deciding, decision-making body or recommending body, and applies to all public employees as well. A public officer who has or whose relative has a substantial interest in a decision of the public agency, or in any contract, sale, purchase, or service to such public agency, must disclose that interest in the official record and not vote on or participate in the decision or transaction. This is, this is the law. Now, there's a lot to break down in there, including what does relative mean? What does substantial interest mean? And so, and what does it mean to disclose that interest? What do you have to do to disclose it? So substantial interest is any pecuniary or proprietary interest, either direct or indirect, other than a remote interest, which doesn't necessarily clarify things, I don't think. But essentially, if you're gaining any money, or any property, or stand to gain it from a decision being made, that becomes a conflict of interest, unless it's a remote interest. Now, remote interest is also defined, it's a list of specified other types of activities, and I have, we'll show it in a second. But I think it's important just to understand that general right there, that if it affects your financial or property interest, it's substantial interest. Now, relative, I don't think I get into this, but we have clear direction that it goes to the fourth degree of consequency. So, your aunts and uncles, or grandparents, grandchildren, children. So, that would be your, when we talk about relatives, that's how far we're talking about. Now, three questions to identify a conflict of interest. Will my decision have a positive or negative impact on my interest, or that of my relatives? Do I have a monetary or ownership interest in the matter? Is my interest other than one of the designated remote interests? Now, if you have a substantial conflict, you must refrain from voting or participating in the discussion. So, get out of the room. You also have to make the interest known on the official record. Now, this presents some interesting questions of how the notice must be given. And, and I'll tell you, the best practice is that there be written notice to the clerk's office. But sometimes it, it comes up quickly. You may not know that a conflict exists, and then you see someone in the audience, and they start talking about something, and you're like, "Oh, no, that's an interest." In that case, again, you make the, make it known by stating on the record for the clerk to hear, and then you leave the room. Yeah?
So you're talking about recusal and disclosure?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And so, recusal is important, you know, you'll sometimes see people who refrain to vote for one reason or the other, they may have a preconceived feeling about something. But if you actually have a conflict of interest, it's not enough just not to vote, you have to get out of the room. You have to remove yourself, not participate in the discussions, and, so, recusal by that means, and then making it known. Now, remote interest, remember, substantial interest is anything that you benefit from financially or property-wise, that's not a remote interest. Remote interests are defined and laid out, they're interests that are deemed minor enough under the law that they do not trigger the reporting and nonparticipation requirements. So you can still vote, you can still participate, and these are examples of remote interests, and there's a whole list of them, but it's if you're a member of a non-compensated officer or nonprofit corporation. So, if you are, serve on a board of a charitable organization in town, you're not paid any money, it's a nonprofit organization, you can still vote on items affecting that. You may not want to, you might want to go, be extra careful about it, but that is what is defined as a remote interest. So remote interest lies between substantial and no conflict at all, and you have to make an individual determination if it's appropriate or not, but the law says you can still vote on that.
Question?
Yeah.
If a board member were an employee of a company that had some business in front of that commission, would you, is that remote, or...
That would be a substantial conflict, because they have a monetary interest in how that company performs.
I, if you guys have questions, I need to ask that you please come up to the microphone so that... Okay? Thank you.
Joe, can I ask a question along that same line? Sorry. Just, so, let's say that there's someone who does substantial business with the city, say, someone who's an asphalt paving company, who does bids on contracts like that regularly, and they come to, say, Olson's Grain to buy dog food. That's, you know, are they put in a large order for dog food, or maybe bird seed at Jay's Bird Barn? That's not like a conflict of interest in that way. Like, where does the line kind of, you know, I mean, there's, in terms of between remote and, you know, substantial?
It's, there's a lot of gray area there between remote and substantial. We have things that are clearly a conflict of interest, clearly substantial conflict of interest. And then there's a huge area of remote interest. So you'll have dealings with each other, as council, as members of commissions will have all kinds of dealings, that doesn't create the same sort of contractual binding relationship of an item or a company going before the board. So if Jay's Bird Barn had an item before, before council, then it would clearly be a conflict. And I think that part we get, but if someone that comes in and buys seed, for example, then comes up to, for an item, the company that that person owns, it's really not, it's really a remote interest. Now, what if there's this company that has a contract to buy and sell seed, and they come before council, that's probably now in the level of substantial interest.
So is there, like, I guess, to that end, is there, is it, like, if there's a contractual relationship, I guess, I think of the distinction you just put out as, you know, you go and buy seed block at Jay's Bird Barn, that's a one-time transaction potentially. But if you're a vendor that's providing, you know, in a contractual relationship, then that's a bit different.
Yeah, I, I think that the contractual ongoing relationship is a big part of it. Now, that doesn't resolve the issue. There might be situations where there's contracts, and you don't have a, you wouldn't have a conflict of interest because of it, or substantial conflict.
Let me, let me butt it up by saying this. If, when in doubt, should someone just ask you?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and I'll get into this, if there's just kind of specific questions of, "Hey, I'm wondering about this or this," ask me or my office, and we'll give a sense of what we think of that. Now, if you asked kind of for an official opinion on the, a conflict of interest, we'll give you official, we have to, and we will give an official, but that is available to all members of council. So if Councilman Moore asked me, "Hey, I have this conflict with my..." So if Councilman Moore asks me, hey, I have this conflict with my seed provider, is this a substantial, remote? I need an official opinion. I'll give him that official opinion, but provide it to all members of council. Same with a commission, I'll give it to all members of a commission. So there, there is a, yeah.
Yeah. I have to leave, I have an issue, and I need to go take care of maybe that's in my store by herself, if I didn't want to seem rude to you. So if I get up and walk out.
Feel free.
If I didn't do anything, thank you for the opportunity to hear this for no less than the 16th time. But you put some flavors that I hadn't heard before, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Senator.
If you see that last bullet point, it really does kind of give an example or let you see the difference between remote and substantial interests. So if you hold shares in a corporation that then becomes in front of you or your board, the law lays out that if you own 3% or more of that corporation, then it becomes a substantial interest. Or if it's more than 5% of your income, it's a substantial interest. And that's kind of, would be a good guideline for any type of contractual relationship. But it also shows that at some point, you just have to have a line, and they gave us exact lines on, when it comes to shares, but there's a bunch of other business you do in your lives that don't have a bright line. Here's a few other remote interests where you're voting on a reimbursement. For example, if you had a business trip and you're voting on approval of a budget that includes money that you may get, but it's part of a business, necessary expenses, that would be a remote interest. So, and the last one I want to address directly is that, is that very last bullet point there. A member of a group or class of at least 10 with an interest no greater than that of another. And I think if you think about P&amp;Z hearing a case regarding a neighborhood, this is a good example. So if you lived in Prescott Lakes and something came to discuss a new project in Prescott Lakes, do they have a conflict of interest? And the answer is conceivably, probably some sort of interest that's involved, because they, they care about their property in a certain way, they might have certain feelings. But they're a member that, in that case, of a group much larger than 10, and you can vote on zoning that may impact your neighborhood. And at some point, everything impacts you. That's the nature of doing business in local government. Gifts and bribes, I think you know, don't accept gifts or bribes.
Oh darn.
So like I said, if you want to just kind of have an informal discussion about potential conflicts, please give me a call. Also, if there's some sort of specific situation, written request for a conflict of interest determination, and we will do that and share with the members of that board. Remedies, contracts that the public body enters into are voidable. The person who's affected, especially affected negatively, can sue, and the court may assess attorney's fees and costs. You or any member of a public body could lose their office or even be subject to felony or misdemeanor prosecution. So I know you've heard this a million times, and thank you for sitting through. Any questions? All right, thank you.
No, that's not it. That's just Joe's portion. I am going to very briefly go over the council rules of procedure and the code of conduct that were recently adopted by city council. Brandon's gonna help me. If you could just pull up the, yeah, rules of procedure. Thank you, Brandon. So council rules of procedure are adopted by the Prescott City Council via resolution. Recently, last summer, actually, the council made some revisions to the rules of procedure and adopted a revised version via resolution. The document outlines council's code of ethics, what the responsibilities of council are, when council meetings take place, who the presiding officer is, conduct at meetings. And one of the most important areas that we addressed recently was in regard to the council's attendance policy. This attendance policy was approved with the adoption of the rules of procedure and is also the standard for all of the boards, commissions, and committees that you all serve on. And I just wanted to overview that to provide some clarity. So in accordance with the city charter, Section 11, if the mayor or any member of council, and in the case of boards and commission, commission members, shall be absent from at least three consecutive called meetings without prior notice to the council, city clerk, or city manager, he or she shall by a majority vote of the balance of council cease to hold office. Exceptions will be made in emergency situations. There were some vagueness in the city charter, which we're also trying to work on through the Charter Review Committee right now. But for purposes of the rules of procedure, we outlined some specific definitions. And called consecutive meetings were successively following without interruption and occurring on successive days. So this is to avoid a circumstance in which a member is not able to attend multiple meetings that take place in one day. Prior notice shall mean written notification at least 24 hours in advance of the called meeting. And called meetings include voting meetings, study sessions, executive sessions, and workshops that are duly called pursuant to local and Arizona laws. And that same standard holds for council subcommittees as well. As I mentioned, the city council also recently adopted via resolution a code of conduct for its board and commission members. This is to lay out the expectations of our board members, who are important to city decision-making processes and act on behalf of council in their volunteer roles, to help shape community decisions on complex issues and topics. It outlines treating each other with respect, and the public as well. Brandon's gonna cover a lot of that in his workplace discussions. And also outlines the expectation for attendance of board and commission members at their respective meetings. Many of you have had meetings since the code of conduct was adopted, and your staff liaisons have very likely asked you to sign the code of conduct, and you can retain a copy of that. If you have not received it and have had a meeting of your respective board or commission, please let the city clerk's office know. If you have not had a meeting of your board or commission since the adoption of the code of conduct, you will be receiving it at your next one. And that's all that I have for everybody. Questions? Okay. Brandon, you're up.
Brandon's faster than a child. Go over, Brandon.
Good afternoon, my name is Brandon Nunez. I'm the HR director for the City of Prescott. I don't know you.
Excuse me, Brandon. You're pretty soft-spoken. Could you speak up into the microphone, please?
I think Joe had this for a tall guy, and now I'm up here. So, can you hear me now? All right. Okay, well, good afternoon, my name is Brandon Nunez. I'm the HR director for the City of Prescott. Before I get into my PowerPoints, I want to do a test of your knowledge. So I'm gonna read a couple examples. These are made-up examples, by the way. I've been in HR for almost 20 years. These are, these are fake, but I do have real examples I will not be providing today. But what I want you to do is ask yourself, do you think this employee was treated with respect, and are there potential legalities because of this situation? So the first example I have for you. A newly promoted 25-year-old supervisor continually receives remarks and jokes and comments about his age. His employees refer to him as rug rat, and it's beginning, it's beginning to offend him. Other employees report this information to you. Do you think that employee was treated with respect?
No.
Are there potential legalities there? Okay. See? It's common sense. All right. Let's say a new employee is hired, and they immediately receive direction from coworkers to perform non-job-related duties over several days. He has to buy lunch, make coffee, and the senior staff members ridicule him by taking pictures and posting it of him on their social media accounts. Was this employee treated with respect?
No.
Okay. Are there potential legalities there? Okay. Last example. You went to the best school in the country, Arizona State University. One of your coworkers attended their arrival at university. Every Christmas, you decide to house mail an ASU sticker to your coworker. Is that disrespect?
It's your doing.
Oh, yes.
It's my thing to do.
Are there legalities because of that, you think? So again, this is a very self-explanatory conversation we're gonna have right now. It's common sense, but just because it's common sense does not mean it's not important. I'm gonna tell you why it's important right now. And I apologize to Councilmember Roosing, because I've had a lot of conversations about ASU UVA with multiple Roosings and Acklins over the years. The topics of discussion, I only have 11 slides, so don't worry, this is short and sweet. But the, we'll talk a little bit about our policies. We'll talk about how those policies are aligned with state and federal laws. We'll talk about creating a respectful workplace, because that's what this is all about, and you all have a hand in that. Now, we'll talk about the complaint process if you do come across these things. We'll talk a little bit about retaliation and your roles and responsibilities. Why this is important is harassment harms assault. This is really a three-pronged approach. Harassment in our workplace environment says a lot about our culture. We've crafted policies to prevent these things, but it also keeps us in compliance with the law. Our culture is really, the context of our culture is really foundational in regards to respect and dignity. That helps us shape our culture. If you engage in or condone behavior that's considered harassment, or any type of hostile workplace environment, that's in, that is not in line with our policies, and our policies have been aligned to keep us in compliant with federal and state laws, such as the Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, which prohibits discrimination. So that's why it's important. This implies to everybody. Our sexual harassment policy, anti-discrimination harassment, hostile work environment applies to everyone. It doesn't matter if you're an employee, part-time, full-time, if you're a volunteer, if you're a board and commission member, if you're an elected official, you represent us, so you fall under these policies. The policy is very simple. The first sentence there says it all, that we strive to maintain a workplace that fosters mutual respect and promotes positive and productive working relationships. We have a zero tolerance policy for discrimination and harassment, and these are outlined in both these policies. Federal law refresher, here's how, here's how, or here's what constitutes illegal harassment. Harassment is a form of employment discrimination. Any unwelcome conduct based on a protected class, these are the protected classes here, if you're not familiar, race, color, religion, sex. Sex has, there's been a couple additions to this. Pregnancy, sexual orientation, gender identity, since 2020, is now in that category of sex, national origin, age. I turned 40 a couple weeks ago, so I fall in that category, which is kind of shocking to me. Disability and genetic information, those are all protected classes. So, and also harassment can be unlawful if it, if enduring the conduct is a condition of somebody's employment, or if the conduct is so severe, pervasive, intimidating, or hostile that a reasonable person would find it offensive. That's the legal definition of harassment. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we're just, we're just trying to create a respectful workplace free from these right here. We're really just trying to make sure that all employees can thrive in our diverse and inclusive work environment, so you really have to pay attention to the types of jokes you're saying out there in the, in the environment. Anything physical, intimidation, ridicule, mockery. This day and age, with cellphone technology, the images people share could be considered disrespect, so you have to be really aware of those things as well. But at the end of the day, again, it's about people being able to thrive in the work environment here at the City of Prescott. Consequences, there's some, this is really two-pronged for the person who may be targeted for harassment or is in a negative work environment. You may see that there's a higher level of stress for that individual, you may see a decline in their performance, they may start missing work more, and they may, they may quit, they may leave the organization. So the employee may not tolerate it. For the person who actually conducts the conduct, there could be potential serious legal ramifications for this, possible termination, and even personally, you could be held liable. Now, and if employee comes to you, these are one of your responsibilities as well. Just gather the facts, notify HR. You can go directly to the city manager for these things. We say you can circumvent the chain of command. That means if, you know, if you're in a board and commission, you don't really know who to talk to. You can talk to me directly, you can talk to anybody in my department directly, you can go to the city manager, you can go to Mr. Young. The key is, we want these things reported, and the earlier we get, we get a hold of them, the easier it is for us to manage. For us, executives, managers, and supervisors, we are, we are the supervisor in the eyes of the law, so we have a duty to act on these. What we don't do or do reflects on the employer. If we ignore harassment, the employer may be held liable. If you don't handle it correctly, we could be held liable. If you engage in the harassment, you're in big trouble, and the employer may be as well. And you can actually be sued personally, depending on the severity of this. So if we do engage in a, in a workplace investigation, retaliation is considered just as serious as harassment itself. Anybody who cooperates in the investigation, this is viewed in the eyes of the law just as serious as conducting the conduct itself. Final takeaways, lead by example, you all represent us, and everybody helps set the tone here at the city. We're trying to create a respectful culture and maintain that. Don't fail to act. If you see something, just please report it. Small issues go away often with some discussion. And that's it, short and sweet, like the HR director.
Brandon?
Oh, boy.
I have a question. Can you give us some examples of like, maybe rude gestures or what would be considered hostile body language?
Yep. I think proximity, we're talking body mechanics, you know, like pointing, shaking, shaking hands, those could be considered potentially hostile. Those are, those are gestures that could be considered intimidating. So anything that a reasonable person might find offensive.
Okay, all righty. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify, when you say shaking hands, you're not talking about a greeting, you're talking about?
I'm talking about like, you know, shaking a fist at somebody in anger, pointing, getting in the face of somebody, something of that nature.
Super.
Pounding the desk.
Pounding the desk would be a good one. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
That's all we have for you today.
So that concludes our discussions today. Unless anybody in the audience has any other comments or questions, hearing none, this workshop is adjourned.